Welcome. My name is Kathy Thompson, President of the Red Clay School District Board of Education. The board is thankful you've come out tonight and grateful to have you here. And happy Black History Month to everyone. The February 10th, 2021 Board Meeting of the Red Clay School District is called to order. It is 7:00 PM. This meeting is held, is being held electronically. On March 12th, 2020, Governor Carney issued a declaration of a state of emergency for the state of Delaware due to a public health threat. The state of emergency allows all public meetings of executive branch public bodies, including boards of education, to be conducted electronically, either by means of telephone conference call or video conference call, or a combination of the two. We're holding this meeting as a hybrid meeting, so people can access the meeting remotely via Zoom or in person at Cab Calloway School of the Arts. This is our fourth hybrid meeting and the, but the 12th time we've had an electronic meeting using Zoom. And we continue to learn new things every meeting, so we thank you for your continued support. We learn something new each meeting. I'm certain we'll get something new this meeting as well. The information regarding this meeting, including information on how to access the meeting in person and/or electronically, was published on February 3rd, 2021, on the Red Clay School District website under the Public Notices section. That's where our meeting notices are always published. Individuals may participate in this meeting either via Zoom conferencing or in person at CAB, and may speak by completing the public comment form available and submitting it at least one half hour prior to the start of the meeting if electronic, or by presenting the form at the meeting prior to the start thereof. If electronic, in order to speak, the name you provide on the Zoom form must be the same name that shows up on your Zoom account. On the public comment form must be the same as on your Zoom account. It must match, the two must match. If for some reason you signed up and are present but not called upon, please raise your hand on the Zoom app and it will be dealt with. As a courtesy to others and to prevent unnecessary disruption, all devices will be muted unless and until a person is recognized to speak. As mentioned, if you signed up to speak, your Zoom name must be what you put in the public comment form you completed in order to be recognized. School board members appearing in person, I believe, have active microphones, and those accessing it electronically will only have their mics activated when they text us and indicate they want to speak during and/or during votes, because there can be feedback when both are active at the same time, electronically and in person. We'll get a taste of this when we vote. Since board members are both in person and remote via Zoom, in order to maximize the effectiveness and orderliness of the meeting, we ask, we will have a roll call vote for each item to be voted on. Each board member should identify themselves by name prior to speaking, and just so everyone knows, the meeting is being recorded. So we'll start with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And now, we have two moments of silence, unfortunately. The first is for Chris Manille. On January 25th, 2021, Chris Manille went in peace after a long and courageous battle with cancer. Chris was a longstanding employee of Red Clay since 2004, and throughout her tenure, made an impression on so many people she crossed paths with, all who adored her. She was a positive force to be reckoned with, and the world will miss her beautiful smile, contagious personality, and of course, her New York accent. While Red Clay Nutrition lost an angel, heaven gained one. Chris will forever remain in our hearts. And let's have a moment of silence for Ms. Manille. Thank you. Our next moment of silence is for one of our students. It is with a heavy heart that we share the news of the passing of one of our students. Saturday afternoon, January 30th, 2021, school staff at AI High School learned of the passing of 10th grader Troy Davis. A member of our early college academy, Troy was a remarkable young man. It was a rare moment when he didn't have a smile on his face. He was the epitome of a model young man. His passing is not just a loss to our school community, but a great loss to the world, as he had a bright future ahead of him. So let's have a motion, a moment of silence for Mr. Davis. Thank you. Okay, so we start with the approval of the February 10th, 2021 agenda. And my understanding is we are going to be moving the choice, do I understand this correctly, that the choice presentation will be moved to, moved up before the vote?
So we had, we have the action item for school choice report. So Ms. Beulah will be making the report. So rather than have it both, because there's a part of it that's included in my superintendent's report, we're just going to move that portion up. So she's still on slate for the action item, which is action item A. But to have her provide that information before the board actually takes action as a vote, in case there are any substantive questions that board members may have, she can answer it at that time.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So can I have a motion, may I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So move.
Mr. Moose, Mr. Wilson moves. Is there a second?
Second, Dr. Bone.
Oh, that was Dr. Bone? Sorry, okay. Sorry, I heard it, it came through. Dr. Bone moved and Dr. Newton seconded. Okay, all in favor, well, let's have a roll call vote, Maria, please. Yeah, they said Dr. Bone.
I moved.
She's.
Mr. Wilson moved, Dr. Bone seconded.
Sorry, got it wrong. Mr. Wilson moved and Dr. Bone seconded, got it confused.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we move on to the students, the student staff and community recognitions. So Ms. Taylor Green will present.
Good evening and thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Tonight, we are honored to recognize four individuals who are dedicating their lives to moving Delaware forward and ensuring a brighter future for children and families right here in Red Clay. With roots in the Red Clay community, these changemakers are making history before our eyes. And in honor of Black History Month, we want to take this opportunity to shine a light on their incredible accomplishments and the tremendous service they are providing to Red Clay schools and the broader community we serve. First up, Dr. Joan Coker. A proud graduate of Alexis I. Dupont High School, Dr. Joan Coker is a board-certified otolaryngologist, also known as an ear, nose, and throat doctor. Having graduated from the Medical College of Ohio and completing her residency in otolaryngology at the King Drew Medical Center in Los Angeles. She then attended Stanford University, where she completed a fellowship in the surgical management of obstructive staphyemia under the guidance of Dr. Nelson Powell, Robert Riley, and Richard Good. Dr. Coker holds membership in the Medical Society of Delaware, the American Academy of Otolaryngology, and is a fellow of the American College of Surgeons. Dr. Coker may look familiar to many of you, as she has been making the rounds on national television in recent months for her work as a surgeon and advisor to Testing for America, a new nonprofit made up of some of the nation's leading scientists. With her colleague, Dr. Neil Hockstein, she assisted Delaware State University in funding and implementing an innovative plan to create a safe on-campus environment for students returning to the school last fall. They were able to complete testing for every person on the DSU campus twice weekly, to the tune of 35,000 tests between August and November 2020. The positivity rate never exceeded 1%, a success that Dr. Coker credits to the efforts of DSU President Dr. Tony Allen and the mighty Hornet team of DSU. When at, can you go back to the last slide? When asked by the Today Show's Craig Melvin if she hopes for the university's plan to become a model for other colleges and universities around the country, Dr. Coker made her ambitions clear. "This will be the model," she said. "So now, not only do we have a seat at the table as HBCUs, but we may be able to set the table in this circumstance." Dr. Coker is on a mission to help educate those in low-income communities and communities of color about COVID-19 prevention and vaccination safety. Through her medical practice, ENT, and allergy of Delaware, she and her team have given over 2,000 vaccines to seniors in our community, with over 50% of those vaccines being distributed to seniors and communities of color. "We've been deliberate in our efforts," she said, "beginning with churches in our community and asking the governor to allow her team to play a role in the reopening of schools in our area." Dr. Coker encourages everyone in the community to educate yourself about the vaccine, which she describes as the only safeguard against the virus that is available at this time. As she says, "We are all in this together." In addition to her roles as a surgeon and medical advisor, Dr. Coker enjoys mentoring students, and she currently serves as Board President of the Pumba Academy Charter School in Wilmington. Dr. Joan Coker is Black History in the Making. Next slide. Dr. Tony Allen. Committed to making Delaware State University the most diverse, contemporary, historically Black college and university in America, Dr. Tony Allen became the university's 12th president in January 2020. With a clear mission to increase educational access and opportunity for all, the university is among the most consequential institutions in the nation, serving 5,000 students in the United States and via international partnerships in 23 countries worldwide. In the fall, Dr. Allen made it a priority to not just reopen Delaware State University, but also to ramp up testing for the diverse campus community, which we know from studies is disproportionately affected by COVID-19. With support from Testing for America, Dr. Allen focused on protecting students' safety and also their continuity of education, so they can get to the finish line. Recognizing that testing is necessary but not sufficient on its own, they opened the campus with robust contact tracing, daily screenings, a residence hall specifically for quarantining, and mandatory mask wearing. In December, Delaware State University received the largest single gift in its 130-year history, $20 million, from philanthropist Mackenzie Scott. Dr. Allen previously served as the university's Executive Vice President and Provost, where he oversaw 220 professors in 18 academic departments. Prior to his time at the university, Dr. Allen developed and led the Corporate Reputation Group at Bank of America and was responsible for ongoing reputation analysis and related research. Dr. Allen also led communications for the bank's largest divisions, including consumer, commercial banking, and wealth management. He started his financial services career as an Executive Vice President at MBNA America. Dr. Allen is the founding president of the Metropolitan Wilmington Urban League, co-founder of Public Allies Delaware, and Chair Emeritus of the National Urban Fellows, widely viewed as the most prestigious fellowship for professionals in the public sector. He is also a member of the Economic and Community Advisory Council for the Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia. Starting his career as speechwriter to then-United States Senator Joseph R. Biden Jr., Dr. Allen was tasked by the president to lead the Presidential An inaugural Committee and to serve on the advisory board of the president's transition team. For his life's work, Dr. Allen has been awarded many awards, many honors. Most notable among them is the Whitney M. Young Award for Advancing Racial Equality, the National Urban League's highest honor. The Excellence in Education Award, given by the Delaware Veterans Association, and Lifetime Achievement Awards from the National Urban Fellows and Public Allies. Dr. Allen holds a BA in Political Science and a PhD in Urban Affairs and Public Policy from the University of Delaware, as well as a Master of Public Administration from Baruch College. A Red Clay parent and a staunch advocate for education throughout the state of Delaware, Dr. Tony Allen is Black History in the Making. Next. Representative Nandi Chukwocha is a lifelong Wilmingtonan with a long history in Red Clay schools. Following the court desegregation order, he attended Heritage Elementary School for 3rd grade, then returned back to the city of Wilmington for 4th, 5th, and 6th grade at Warner Elementary School, followed by 7th and 8th grade at Skyline Middle School. A longtime advocate of public education, Chukwocha began tutoring and mentoring students in the community when he himself was just a teenager as a camp counselor at the Walnut Street YMCA. He went on to graduate from Delaware State University with a Master of Social Work and a strong desire to continue the legacy of his father, community advocate William Hicks Anderson. As a community-based Master of Social Work, Chukwocha has dedicated over 30 years of direct service and administrative experience working with and on behalf of youth, families, and communities. As the community schools program director of Children and Families First Delaware, he oversees staff and wraparound services for schools, such as Evan G. Shortledge Academy and Warner Elementary School. Through this longstanding partnership with Children and Families First of Delaware, Red Clay schools have specialized staff members to focus on enhancing the school-to-home relationship through community outreach, mental health services, parent engagement activities, and social-emotional learning supports for students. Chukwocha works closely with the principals in our schools to help strengthen the lines of communication and support between the students' home, school, and community. "What I find most rewarding about this work," he says, "is the continuing, is the continuing of a proud legacy, knowing that I was once one of the same students and many within my community supported me then, just as I strive to support students and their families today." Representative Chukwocha is a Democratic member of the Delaware House of Representatives, representing District 1. A former Wilmington City Councilman, he served as President Pro Tem and chaired the Education, Youth, and Families Committee, and was Vice Chair for the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Representative Chukwocha sees a brighter future for young Wilmingtonans. "My greatest hope is that we can end the senseless violence in the city I love," he said. "Our children deserve peace, love, and reasons to smile with joy uncontrollably." Representative Chukwocha is a veteran who proudly served in the United States Army and is one-half of the twin poets, the acclaimed spoken-word duo that was appointed as the state of Delaware's 17th Poets Laureate. With his identical twin brother, he teaches children about the importance of self-expression and learning to write down their thoughts to help themselves and others with the challenges and opportunities they face. Representative Nandi Chukwocha is Black History in the Making. Next slide. Do we go back one?
Yeah.
Looks like there's a slide missing to be, for Senator Elizabeth Tizzie Lockman. Senator Lockman represents the 3rd Senate District, which encompasses communities in Central and West Wilmington, along with portions of Newport. Raised in Wilmington's Cool Spring neighborhood, Lockman graduated from Alexis I. Dupont High School and later earned a bachelor's degree from New York University and a master's degree in Urban Affairs and Public Policy from the University of Delaware. Lockman entered community service in 2004 through Public Allies Delaware, where she served as program manager. When her daughter enrolled in kindergarten in Wilmington, Lockman joined the Parent-Teacher Association at her school, Highlands Elementary School, where she served as president from 2010 to 2013, increasing engagement around school climate and district issues. She volunteered extensively running projects supporting public schools, arts, and urban revitalization in Wilmington. From there, she was appointed to the Wilmington Education Advisory Committee by then-Governor Jack Markell, and later served as Vice Chair of the Wilmington Education Improvement Commission, while also working as Director of the Parent Advisory Council on Education, or PACE Initiative, at the Christiana Cultural Arts Center. Lockman was elected to the Delaware Senate in 2018, where she succeeded former Senator Robert Marshall to become just the second African-American woman elected to the General Assembly's upper chamber. Since taking office, Senator Lockman has continued to fight for public education reforms that will improve educational equity and outcomes for all students, particularly those in Wilmington and Northern Newcastle County. She also has lent her support to several criminal justice reform efforts. Senator Lockman currently serves as Chair of the Sunset Committee, Vice Chair of the Senate Education Committee, and a member of the Senate Corrections and Public Safety and Transportation Committees. She also serves as Co-Chair of the Reading Consortium for Education Equity, which is tasked with spearheading the search for ways the Delaware Department of Education and the General Assembly can work together to improve outcomes for students in Wilmington and Northern Newcastle County. Senator Elizabeth Lockman is Black History in the Making. Thank you.
Thank you. I think. Four outstanding candidates of Black History in the Making. Thank you very much, Ms. Taylor. And now we move on to public comment. Again, thank you for coming out tonight to attend our meeting and share your thoughts. Under Board Policy 2006, the board encourages staff and community to share concerns regarding school issues and educational programs. Sharing can be done verbally, in writing, and/or by speaking at the meeting. Under Board Policy 2006, the board shall provide a time period of up to 30 minutes at each board meeting for public comments, which time may be extended at the discretion of the board. Speakers are requested to give a written copy of their comments to the superintendent, and speakers are limited to a three-minute time period. The time will be monitored, and you will be able to see a timer on the screen, which counts down the time. Speakers will be unmuted by the Red Clay team when it's time to speak, and when time is up, the mic will be muted. So again, thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts. And our first speaker is Dr. Lynette Edwards. Welcome, Dr. Edwards.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I'm actually going to ask if the president of the Friends of Hocason Color School is here with us, Mr. David Wilk, if he would actually speak before me, because my comments are actually a follow-up for his. Is that a problem, or can that be arranged?
It would be better if he spoke, if he submitted comments by himself. It's fine, okay. Sure. Is it still three minutes?
Great, hello?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you so much to the board of the Red Clay School District. And we're, Dr. Edwards and I are really excited to have a few minutes just to get to know all of you in a very quick way, and to also let you know how excited we are to be board members of the Friends of Hocason Colored School #107, which is located in Red Clay School District at 4266 Mill Creek Road in Hocason. And most of you may know this, but many in the Hocason community do not realize that in their midst is a national treasure, which goes back to the foundational decision of Brown versus Board of Education back in the 1950s through a famous court case called Buella v. Gebhardt. And Shirley Buella was a young lady whose story became a Supreme Court decision in the state of Delaware that ultimately led to the Brown versus Board of Education decision. And we are a nonprofit group. Dr. Edwards and I are one of about 10 to 12 board members who have spent the last eight years. We saved the school from sheriff sale in 2012, and we recently announced about a year ago, we, or a little bit more than a year ago, 15 months ago, we announced that we were going to transform the school into a center for diversity, inclusion, and social equity, inspired by its history, its monumental history in Brown v. Board of Education. During the past year or so, we have had the good fortune to work very closely with Dr. Tuanda Bond at the school and Dr. Green.
And there's one minute left, just so you know.
Sure, and more recently with Holly Goldur, the head of the Social Studies Department, and the AI librarian, or the AI principal. And Dr. Edwards has been presenting a history series on Buella v. Gebhardt for Kizaiak Finney's class, and also working at different schools. So we are very excited to make the Hocason Colored School and our future diversity center a bright spot within the Red Clay Consolidated School District. And we have a website, which is hocasoncoloredschool107.org, which has a lot of content on it. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Bond, who has actually written a book that is called Ride Shirley Ride, about Shirley Buella.
Thank you so much. And I believe that was Mr. Wilk. Dr. Wilk, the second speaker? Okay. So, Dr. Lynette Edwards, I didn't know if you wanted to speak because Mr. Wilk went first?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. I was confused.
Yeah, I just want to do just a quick follow-up. We are currently, as the Friends of Hocason Color School, sharing the story of Shirley Buella throughout the school district. Shirley, as you know, attended Hocason Color School 107. She began there in kindergarten and then went on to integrate Hocason School #29 in the 3rd grade. But what people don't know is that Shirley Buella became a graduate of AI Dupont High School in the class of 1962. So if there was not a Buella story, we like to say, "If not for Buella, there would be no Brown." We are continuing to expand our efforts here with the assistance of so many of the Hocason residents, including local parents and all kind of teachers that are involved. We actually have a young lady who's a student in Red Clay Consolidated School District. She was the winner of the History Day essay last year, Helena Hendrickson, who has got us in contact with the Black Cultural Club. So we're looking forward to expanding our efforts and connecting with social studies teacher, Ms. Sullivan, and the sponsor there, Jocelyn Morris. Just want the district to know that we are on the roll here. There's been a press conference released by, a press statement released by Senator Coombs just yesterday about the committee, Senate and House Representative, Representative, sorry about that, Representative Clyburn from South Carolina. They have released their press statements about Hocason Color School and it becoming a national museum with the parks, National Park site. So we are very excited and looking forward to continuing our work with the Red Clay Consolidated School District as we make this a Delaware story, a district story, and hopefully a national story. So we thank you so much for your time and opportunity. And again, please continue to look for us throughout the district, especially this month, for Black History Month, and also leading into Women's History Month in March. And we look forward to working, continuing our work with Dr. Bond and so many others, as well as the University of Delaware. Mr. Fran O'Malley is a part of this project. Thank you for your time this evening, and we look forward to just upward mobility and sharing more about the Shirley Buella story. Thank you.
And thank you both very much for all your work on that. That's wonderful, thank you. So our next speaker is Ms. Kristin Nichols. Welcome, Ms. Nichols. Hello, Ms. Nichols? Okay, I see someone now. Ms. Nichols?
Hi, so sorry about that.
That's good.
All right. Hello, board. My name's Kristin Michaels. I graduated from Cab Calloway last year, and I actually used to work these meetings, so you might recognize me as that person who would set up your microphones and turn on your lights. But I'm here today to speak about the importance of the Collaborative Cultural Studies Course that Holly Goldur and Tuanda Bond have been working on. A little background on me. I work as a queer history researcher for the Delaware History Museum, and I'm a lesbian myself. I found a lot of support in Red Clay from my teachers, administration, and the social atmosphere at CAB, but one part I did not see myself in was the curriculum. I took several social studies courses and history courses throughout middle and high school, and queer people were not talked about even once. We cover the '80s and the rise of conservatism, but not a single word on the AIDS crisis. We cover the social movements of the '60s and '70s, but nothing about gay or trans liberation. To leave queer people out of history is to act like they never existed. But we have. It would have meant the world to me as a little 13-year-old trying to figure out who she was, to know I was standing on the shoulders of millions, to know that queer people have lived and thrived. I learned about the American Revolution at least four different times in my 13 years of Red Clay schooling, but I never once learned about Major General Von Stupen, an openly gay general that Washington brought to train the troops at Valley Forge and win us the revolution. It would have been so easy for a teacher to mention that, just for two minutes, and change my entire idea of what being gay has meant in history. But I had to seek that information out on my own. As I go to college and I meet people from less accepting backgrounds, I realize that almost all the queer people in my life have no conception of gay history, which is why I'm so proud of Red Clay for trying to create a class to bridge those gaps with the Collaborative Cultural Studies Course. This class would not only inform students, but create empathy, prevent bullying, and maybe even save a life, because I know not all schools in Red Clay are as accepting as CAB. I just wanted to thank the board for putting their full support behind the Collaborative Cultural Studies Course. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels. Appreciate it. The next speaker is Dr. Ivan Sun. Welcome, Dr. Sun.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having me.
Can I ask Ms. Barbara Silver to speak first? Barbara is the chair of the CACC. I will follow Barbara then.
Sure. So you'll just hang on for a sec. So, okay, Ms. Barbara Silver. Welcome, Ms. Silver.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for having us here today. I am Barbara Silver from the Chinese American Community Center. I'd also like to thank Dr. Bond, Ms. Fay, and the Holly Goldner for inviting us to participate in the Comparative Cultural Studies course. We're very honored and very, you know, excited to be part of this new endeavor. The Chinese American Community Center is located in Hocason, Delaware. We were founded in 1982 by a group of 100 Chinese-American families. And our mission is to promote and encourage, you know, the celebration of cultural heritage and cultural diversity. You know, the other option, the other thing we are very proactive on is, is public outreach and public education in regard to celebrating Delaware's diverse cultural tapestries. And so I'd like to say that that is one of the most important things in our community. And we are now on our third generation of families that are part of the Chinese American Community Center. And so for us, having the chance to be part of the voice of Delaware's cultural communities is a very big honor for us. I know I have a little bit of time left, but I just wanted to say thank you and thank you for all of everything everybody does as well. And one more thing, I'm sorry. I would be remiss if I did not do this, but we are approaching the Chinese New Year season. So I'd like to wish everybody, you know, a very happy New Year, much health, happiness, and prosperity for the year from your friends at the Chinese American Community Center. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Silver, very much. And now back to Dr. Ivan Sun. Welcome again, Dr. Sun.
Thank you for having me again. I'm a member of the CACC governing board. I'm also a professor of sociology and criminal justice with University of Delaware. So I would like to speak to support on the new proposal about this comparative culture studies. We have engaged in a conversation with the school team, Dr. Bonds and Holly Gold and a few others. And we have provide, already provide information on teaching and the learning resources such as books and course syllabus. So the district should really be proud for coming up. This is such a solid for course because I think it is very important, it's timely, and is in line with the critical mission of college education that emphasize diversity, social justice, and globalization. So we fully support the proposal of the course. And we'll be more than happy to work with the district to help launching the course. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sun. So our next speaker is Ms. Christine Groth from the Delaware Historical Society. Welcome, Ms. Groth.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. I want to thank you for inviting me here tonight. Brief introduction of myself. My name is Christine Groth, and I am the current executive assistant of the Delaware Historical Society. Now, before my tenure at the Historical Society, I've been an administrator at a few different universities, including Cal State University and San Bernardino, California, the University of Delaware, and Drexel University. I have a degree in business from Golden Beacon College and a degree in history from Cal State San Bernardino. So my work at the university level, even though it's consisted of mostly administrative operational duties, I've always made a point to be involved in an education capacity. I've mentored a lot of students, and I'm very proud to see those students that I mentor really move on to great things in their lives. So with that said, with my passion for history and education, and I think I've landed my dream job here where I can put my skills together, including administration, education, and history. So I'm excited to hear that the school district is implementing the comparative cultural studies. Education about diversity and inclusion is so very important for students as they learn and grow into their diverse communities. With that being said, one of the aspects of the Delaware Historical Society that is most compelling for me as an employee especially is the organization's commitment to inclusion, diversity, education, accessibility, and a long-lived plan to incorporate these values into the culture of the organization. The Delaware Historical Society is a leader to the commitment of creating a welcoming environment. We seek help from the community to make sure everyone's history is told. I'd like to tell you briefly about one of our current projects, and we're working with Ms. Michaels as our intern. We are researching Delaware's LGBTQ history. You know, historians, we love to categorize historical eras and time periods, you know, like the Dark Ages. Well, the gay revolution, quote unquote, was officially categorized in 1969 when a group of LGBTQ patrons at a local bar in New York City fought back against harassment and discrimination. So when studying cultures, we want to know the who, what, where, when, and how. What is LGBTQ, LGBTQ history in Delaware? Who came before me? What were the experiences? Who were these people? How did they live? How did they meet? How did they live happily ever after? So what we're doing right now is to answer these questions. We hired Kristin. She's going to be a big part of this in helping us to build a comparable and competent cultural history. We're going to display her work prominently in one of our museum windows for Pride Month in June. And we're hoping this display and others welcomes visitors to compare the cultures we continue to highlight. We'll break down stereotypes and we'll lead to a better understanding and awareness that history is indeed in our own backyards.
Thank you so much. Sounds exciting, Ms. Groth. Thank you. And our last speaker is Ms. Gail Petrick. Welcome, Ms. Petrick. Hello?
He's in. I don't know why she's not talking.
It looks like.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes. But now we can't. Hello, Ms. Petrick?
Yes.
Okay, now we can hear you.
Good. I'm from the Jewish Historical Society of Delaware, and I'm going to reiterate what so many of the other speakers this evening said. Thank you so much for welcoming us to participate in the Comparative Cultural Studies planning with Holly Goldner and Dr. Tuanda Bond. We're very much looking forward to helping the students in the school district recognize the contributions and activities of the Jewish community in Delaware. We're eager to share some of our collections from the Historical Society and to help put together materials for the teachers planning the curriculum that will share the stories of the Jewish community. We're very pleased to be part of this cooperative effort. We look forward to working with the school district and with the teachers and are very happy to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're happy you're a part of it as well. So thank you very much, Ms. Petrick. Okay, that concludes the public comment, so we now move on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session of January 2021? So move.
Dr. Bone.
Okay. Okay. Dr. Bone moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson seconds. Maria, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Motion carries.
And is, do I have, may I have a motion to accept the minutes from the January 2021 regular session?
So move.
Mr. Wilson moves. Is there a second?
Dr. Bone second.
Dr. Newton seconded. Okay, roll call vote again, please, Maria.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Motion carries.
Okay, so we move on to action items. And should we put the recommended action on the table and then have Ms. Beulah come up? Okay, so it is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved the school choice recommendations for 2021-2022 school year as submitted.
And what we'll do at this time is have Ms. Beulah just run through the presentation. And again, if board members have any questions, she can answer them at that time before you actually. Go ahead, Ms. Beulah. If you can speak into the mic, Ms. Beulah.
Sure. Is everyone able to hear me now?
Go ahead, Ms. Beulah.
Do you need me to just continue from here?
If you don't mind, if you just can maybe backtrack, just start at the 1,762 invitations.
Sure. Tony, I'm going to put this down. Can you advance for me? Thank you. So with the action item recommendation, we will be sending out 1,762 invitations with 1,377 waitlisted seats. And again, as a reminder, the waitlisted seats, a student can take up more than one waitlisted seat if they were invited to their second or third choice. They can, in essence, be taking up a waitlist seat at their first and second choice. So it's not necessarily 1,377 students, but actual seats. And that waitlist is held until the first day of school, so we can, I'm inviting anywhere from the choice period up until the first day of school off the waitlist. Next slide. Our application statistics for this year, we received 2,687 applications, which was a 21% decrease from the applications we received last year, which was over 3,400. And by grade level, our highest producing grade levels that we receive applications for are ninth and sixth grade, with our, the third closest is kindergarten. Ninth grade applications were in the general average for every year, thoroughly down 40 or 50 students, where our sixth grade applications were down over 150 this year. The breakdown of invitations by in-district and out-of-district, approximately 75% of the invitations that were asking in this action item will be going to in-district students, with 447 invitations being extended to out-of-district students. To further break down that out-of-district group, 401 of those out-of-district students are being invited to a seat that we will not have any in-district students on the waitlist. So they're not taking a seat of any in-district students. Forty-six of those seats are invitations to be extended to a returning student or a sibling of a returning student by state choice law, the way the priorities are established in that law. We need to, we are required to invite those two groups before we get into in-district students. But again, that's only 10% of that out-of-district population. So this was a chart we had been asked a few years ago to start producing for the board. We changed it a little bit. We're not, all of, in the executive section, you have a list of each school and their capacities for the year, but we were asked to present the schools that are at 95% or greater estimated capacity at this time. So these are our only schools that will be at 95% capacity based on choice. I need to mention Conrad Schools of Science at 106%. Is, it will not be that way once the school year starts. We over-invite at ninth grade. We've looked at the decline percentages of students over the past five years. And Mr. Prud and I have come up with a number to over-invite to get that net loss and make sure we're going to fill the ninth grade at Conrad Schools of Science accurately. So starting the school year off, they will be at their 174 ninth grade. Next slide. So from here, the process, the notifications, if approved this evening, need to be emailed or mailed within five working days of your action this evening. Parents must accept by March 19th, and that is a state date. So every district and charter in the state has until March 19th for students to apply. They can't require students to reply to their invitation before that date. Any invitation not accepted by that date is considered refused. We will decline the seat and we will move down a waitlist. And kindergarten applications, as we process them through the lottery this time, we still can accept applications up until the first day of school.
That concludes our presentation. Are there any questions on behalf of the board?
I have some questions.
Dr. Bohm has some questions.
Thank you for the report. I really appreciated it, and I liked going through the numbers. I do have a few questions, and I have some statements interwoven through here. So one of the questions that I had was, when I look at the official seven-page report, I noticed that, as in years past, some schools have really high numbers of people who apply to them, and other schools have very low numbers or no numbers of students who apply to them. So I'm going to look at one star, pardon me, the first one actually on my list on page four. So North Star had 130 students who applied for kindergarten, and only 16 were invited. In first grade, 50 students applied and three were invited. In grades, I'm going to skip a little, in grades three, four, and five, students applied, but no one was invited. So one of the questions I have, and if you look at, say, an HB middle or a Cook, you find similar numbers. So for Cook, you had kindergarten, you had 75 students apply, but only 13 were invited. In first grade, 35 applied, but none were invited. And in most grades, no students were invited at Cook. At HB, you had 230 who applied for sixth grade, but only 37 were actually invited, sorry, 230 that applied, but only 37 that were invited. So my first question is, do parents throughout the district, are they made aware of the fact that tracing into a school that isn't their feeder pattern school is often very difficult, just, I think, in terms of transparency for the community? Are people made aware of that?
Yes, so on the schoolchoicede.org website, where they go to apply, there's a page that lists all of the Red Clay schools, and on there, it lists if a waitlist is likely, or if they're open or waitlist, I can't remember the third one. But we do list out there that there, especially the schools that you mentioned, that a waitlist would be likely, that there are few seats.
Okay, because of, I've been on the board for seven years, I've been involved in the district for longer than that, we've had a consistent narrative of parents telling us that it's often difficult to find information, and some people don't have the technology, they don't have the time, they don't know where to go and look. I mean, I know even of last year, we had a previous school board president who regularly said they couldn't find anything on our website. I'm wondering in one of the communications the district sends out in perhaps November and in December, if that information can be made more readily available to parents, so they're not going around looking for it? Because I, I've received the number of parents asking what the numbers were, because they said so many people applied to get into these schools, and I'm not hearing anyone who is accepted. So I think that for transparency for the district, that might be a form of communication that the community finds helpful. So that, so that's one thing. The second thing I wanted to bring up was, I know that you indicated that applications were down 21%, and I also know the district asked the Department of Education to extend the deadline for choice applications, so I do want to say thank you. I'm grateful for the ask, and I am not happy that Doe did not extend that extension, because right now, in the midst of a pandemic, when people are experiencing hardship on multiple levels, it would have been nice to have a little bit more legroom to submit an application, because choice may not be at the top of people's list right now. But in terms of that percent, the 21% in decrease of applications, I wanted to know what that percentage looked like across schools. So was that a uniform at every single school, and I think we know the answer to that, at every single school, was it a reduction of 21%? Or was it specific to certain schools? So I'd like to know, and you may not have that information tonight, but I'd like to know if a school like, say, Richardson Park, or a school like Ritchie, or a school like Warner, what their percentage decline was in choice application, applications in comparison to a school like a North Star, or a Cook, or an HB?
You don't, do I have that for you? I just don't have it this evening.
Okay, so if you, if you could work on that and get that, that would be great. And I spoke to Dr. Ammon about that earlier, and he said you may not have the information tonight, so that's absolutely fine. But I would like to make an official request for that. I'd like to see how that percentage differs from our different schools across the district. The other question I have is, if we look at our magnet, so if we look at CAB, and if we look at Conrad, again, we have those really high percentages of students who applied. So Conrad for sixth grade, on page five of the report, we had 522 students who applied, and 166 were invited. In ninth grade, we had 643 students who applied, 250 were invited. And then CAB, they do their numbers broken out per each division, so I'm not going to go through all those numbers. But my question is, what percentage, and I'm looking for two things, the actual percentage, and I'm also looking for the actual number of students that were invited to the school, what percentage of them were from Title I schools? And what was that numeric number? So what was the raw number? So I'd like to see if there, you know, if that's, if there's parity there, if there's discrepancy, and then moving forward, even though I think I've asked this almost every year that I've been on the board, moving forward, trying to figure out a way how to address those disparities if we in fact, if we in fact do see them. Does that make sense?
Yep, and I will, I'll add that to the same number you requested earlier.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, do we know how students were assessed at CAB this year? Because since such a large number of our students actually are not in physical classrooms, I know that at our Title I schools, we have even higher numbers of students who are not in physical classrooms, for a number of reasons. So how were students actually assessed?
Yep, so this year, we met with a group from CAB Callaway and from the Technology Office to figure out a way that we can still do the assessments, even though a lot of the in-person, face-to-face wasn't going to happen. So we set up Google Drives. Every student in Red Clay has a Google, a redclayschools.com account, so they were able to upload their portfolios for certain programs and other programs they did through Zoom. And then they did offer in-person at high school vocal and instrumental work in person, but for quite a few programs, they did all of the assessments through Zoom, so that they were still able to use a platform that the students were familiar with at elementary level, since they're using it every day with their teachers. They thought that was a great way to add a comfort level for their students. We made sure we used Zoom. And then the, for digital com and visual arts, they were able to take pictures and upload those pictures into a Google Drive for the teachers to do the assessments in that fashion.
Okay, was there any conversation about the fact that the virtual nature of the assessment process may have negatively impacted the choice application rates?
For the application rates, I know, I can't speak to that. I do know that for any student or parent that had a question, the office staff at CAB were available to answer any question, and they spoke with each parent that had any kind of concerns over the assessments. Again, we did also offer any accommodation for any students that had an IEP or 504 that whose parent requested it. We made sure that we offered those special accommodations as well as we have in the past.
And I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm wondering out loud here, applications were down 21%, right?
Applications were down, I can speak to one number that I just know off the top of my head. It was, they were down across the board. So where we normally receive over 700 applications for sixth grade at Conrad, we had 522. So they weren't just down in Red Clay. Across the state, it was an issue. So before, I made that request to the Department of Ed, we checked with surrounding districts and charters. So they were down statewide.
Okay, so I'm just wondering here about the relationship between having a virtual assessment process and the number of applica, applicant, applications that we receive. And I'm querying about that, because across the nation, a number of school districts made the decision that they wouldn't have students try out or be assessed by the school or the district or anyone to get into a magnet, because they understood the undue hardship that was presented to families, especially low-income families and families that live at the margins, who may not have access to the things that many middle-class families have access to. So I think that, hopefully, we will not be in a pandemic again, but I think that moving forward, it's incumbent upon us as a district to take factors such as what we're experiencing right now into consideration. We already know that the invitations that are given to our low-income students and students with other high needs backgrounds, they're low anyway, right? We know at a Conrad or a CAB, there are not a lot of students of color. There are fewer students who have special education status in comparison to our more traditional public schools, right? We know that there, there are these discrepancies, and then this compounding factor of a pandemic in the midst of an already unstable environment that doesn't allow all students' access creates a scenario of me looking at this seven-page document and seeing that we have many, many students who are in search of excellent schools. And we have some schools that are identified as excellent schools, and we can see that by the number of applicants we have vying to get into those schools. And then we have other schools in our district that are viewed as, you know, not good schools, right? People don't want to go to them, and we can just look at the seven-page report and see the schools that people are not trying to choice into. So I think it's incumbent, like I said earlier, upon us as a district to try and levy this playing field into a more acceptable pattern, so that, you know, equal educational opportunities are available to all people. And it just made me very sad and frustrated when I read through this report today. And I've said this almost every single year on the school board, so I would be remiss if I didn't say it again today. So that, that's my spiel. Thank you, and I look forward to the stats that you will provide me with in the next week or two.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Hi, this is Board Member Matthews. I just have a comment. Thank you, Dr. Bohm, for your questions and your insights and guidance in breaking down the data and what we're seeing in the trends, not only for our board, but for the community. I just wanted to echo that same sentiment and those same points, and I just wanted to share for the record that I am in full agreement of what Dr. Bohm has presented tonight. It is concerning.
Okay, hearing no other comments, is there a motion to accept, to approve the school choice recommendations for the 2020, 2021, 2022 school year as presented by Ms. Beulah?
So moved, Jason Casper.
Was that Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Casper moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson seconds. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Maria will do a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Come back to Dr. Newton. Come back to her, Maria.
Oh, she's not, oh. I'm sorry, Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
So six yes, one absent. Motion carries.
Okay, we move on to the next action item, which is Board Policy 8003. It's the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve and adopt Board Policy 8003 as presented and submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wilson moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Bohm, second.
Dr. Bohm seconds. Okay, any discussion? Dr. Brumal presented this last meeting, I believe, but I know that it was discussed at the Board Policy Committee. There were a couple of upgrades that were made, which were outstanding upgrades about student, the way in which the policy was phrased. So it wasn't about homeless students, it was about students experiencing homelessness. But I don't know if Dr. Brumal wants to comment on anything else. It was approved by the Board Policy Committee. There were some outstanding upgrades. Okay, not hearing any other comments. We'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Stevens.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
I'll wait for you. Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Okay, the last action item is the cell phone tower. It's the recommendation of the Red Clay Board of Education that we approve the cell phone tower negotiation contract as discussed in executive session.
And just, Madam President, I want to be mindful that this is an intent to negotiate, so just so that the public's aware.
Right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Casper moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson seconds. Is there any discussion? Okay, Maria will take a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
No, not at this time.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
So six yes, one no, motion carries.
Okay, we move on to the consent items. It's the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve action consent items A to D as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved, Dr. Newton.
Dr. Newton moves. Is there a second?
Second, this is Jose Matthews.
Mr. Matthews seconds. We'll take a vote, please, Maria.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. So we now move on to the presentations, and the first is Board Policy Under Review 8004, Dr. Brumal.
Good evening. We're here for the first reading of Policy 8004, The Educational Stability for Children in Foster Care. The objections are to go over the policy development process, summarize Policy 8004, and outline our next steps, including timeline and ways for people to participate in the process. This Policy 8004, as I said, deals with educational stability for children in foster care. The need for the policy is just a change in regulations. These are all practices and laws that we currently follow, but we're now required to have a school district policy. And here, the Board of Education for Red Clay and Southern School District intends to promote educational stability for students in foster care in accordance with state law. The district shall coordinate with other districts, local child welfare agencies, and other agencies of programs providing services to students in foster care as needed. Our next steps is we'll post these policies, this policy tomorrow online. It'll be available with public review and comment, just in encouraging people to comment. As Kathy mentioned earlier, the change in the wording for 8003 came from a comment from one of our staff members with a tentative training on that topic. We'll have a Board Policy Review Meeting at the district office, 5 o'clock on March 3rd, and we'll return on St. Patrick's Day with our second presentation to the board for reading in action.
Thank you, Dr. Brumal. Any questions? I think we're done. Okay, so the next is a topic near and dear to all of our hearts, the FY 2021 Final Budget. Ms. Florrie.
Hi, good evening, board members.
Good evening.
So I'm here tonight a little bit later than norm-
Um, so I'm here tonight, um, a little bit later than normal, uh, we're usually here in January talking about the final budget. But this year, because of COVID, um, the deadline for September thirtieth, the unit count. Was moved to November thirteenth, and so that count was taken later. That count is what drives our funding from the state of Delaware. And much like you heard from Ms. Beulie tonight, um, in terms of the decline in the numbers of. Um, choice applications, we also are seeing, um, this year from the budget standpoint, I would say is the decline in enrollment. The overall change in the budget is not significant, it's a negative point five percent, uh, revenue from the preliminary budget. So I'm not talking about a massive shift, but the shift is real in that we were down twenty three units. Um, and we'll go over exactly where we were down. Um, so with the November thirteenth unit count was taken in place of September thirtieth. But that drives, it's not just the number of teachers or the number of units that you earn. It's also the divi- Division two, which is the all over cost, and then Division three, which is equalization. So when you're down units, it funnels through all of the funding lines from the state. Um, and you'll see that reflected as a reduction in the final budget. Um, normally what I say is it's tweaks, it's a little bit more than tweaks, but it's not a massive shift. The good news is that the state has in place a process for ninety percent, a ninety eight percent guarantee. Of an estimated unit count, we do an estimated unit count in April. And that, and that provides district stability, um, for staffing at through the summer and late spring. And so this was the first year we needed it, um, we've always been over that, but this year that guarantee. Meant that we were below the ninety eight percent, but we received the ninety eight percent. As a guarantee, in addition to that, in late December, Mr. Green was, um, contacted by the Department of Education. As were all the school districts and the state actually included an additional ninety nine percent guarantee for. Division one units only, but it was still beyond the ninety eight percent that came as a cash. Um, allocation from the state, so it it brought up. Uh, what we would normally have been down and that allocation was just over a million dollars, so it was significant for the district. Um, there were slight increases in revenue because our choice and charter numbers were down. So more students were in Red Clay, um, and. But we've talked about this for months, uh, there is a slight reduction in local tax receipts. People are, uh, for the most part paying their property taxes, they were due, uh, September thirtieth. But we have seen a slight reduction and so the final budget includes that. I see what you mean, Christine, it's just going click, click. Alright, so I'll do the same thing and I'll just turn it over. When you hit it once, it just goes pop, pop. Okay, so these are the numbers, we were down four hundred and sixty three students and what's really telling. Um, and and why this is important is because this, again, this drives the funding. So we were down four hundred and sixty three u- students, but down twenty two units. So really, it's, it's taking the snapshot now, but it's also estimating what it's going to look like next year. You would think that did, who, who was it that, you know, wasn't in our system this year that was last year? We were only down one pre-K student versus last year, two hundred and six, fourth through twelfth graders, sixty one and ten students. A lot of people, you know, there's speculation, it's just because people aren't sending kindergarteners. Well, we were down more fourth through twelfth grade than we were K through three. Um, we were down basic students, but we were actually up thirty four complex students. And the units, now that's interesting too, because in the units we were down twenty three units. But they were split, five point four were in elementary, more, more than double in secondary and five in special schools. So i- i- it's across the board, you can't say it's just one grade, you can't say it's just one school. It was really across the board, also, there were schools that have more students than they did last year. So even though our overall trend was down, there were some schools that had, um, an increase that you'll see in the budget. For related services, we earned an additional two, but we lost two in academic excellence, so that was really a net wash. This is really the, um, the trends, um, in the Finance Committee last night when we talked about this. The question was, what was the peak, um, and so I looked that up, the peak was in two thousand and thirteen. And it was, I think I wrote it on a d- different piece, it was sixteen thousand five hundred. So just slightly before this chart, but it's been, our enrollment has been coming down, um, steadily since two thousand and thirteen. However, at the same time, our units have been going up. How do you have fewer students but earn more units? It's because of the divisor and it's because we, every year we have more special education students. We talk about that with the tuition tax, we talk about that, um, i- it, that's been a consistent trend. But you can see, the other consistent trend this year is both of them, both enrollment and units took a sharp decline. So understanding those numbers as we look to enrollment for the twenty twenty two budget, um, you know, we'll continue to monitor those closely. Okay, I'm going to the next one. So the, the other question was, did they go to charters, where did the students go? Um, if we're down so many, where did they go? They didn't go to charters and they didn't go to other school districts, in fact, more students came back to Red Clay. And more students choice into Red Clay from other districts, fifty, fif- this is the current year too. Um, so these numbers Ms. Beulie presented next year, but this is this year's numbers. Fifty six more students choice into Red Clay, um, and thirty four s- fewer students choice out to the surrounding districts. So we had a net positive of ninety there, which translates to additional revenue, um, in the preliminary budget. More students stayed, um, and fewer students enrolled in charter schools by thirty nine. So again, not a significant shift, but we've seen, uh, that trend line for charter enrollment has been increasing every year. So this is the first, uh, decrease for charter. So the highlights, um, and in terms of the revenue side, again, reflect exactly what that enrollment decline is there. The final budget doesn't typically include any policy changes per se, um, so it's really just putting in place the enrollment shifts. And what's happening, right, if, with the decrease in local tax receipts, there was a minor adjustment for that. Um, but overall, it's a net revenue decline of point five percent from the preliminary budget. And there are some adds, um, there's an increase in estimated senior tax rebates, more seniors applied for or qualified for. The senior tax rebate at the state level, there was an increase in the choice income, there was an increase in. Uh, indirect costs that came as a result of the CARES Act, the federal funding. Um, and so that comes as indirect into the operating budget, but then there were a significant, significant number of decreased items. That was interest, that was charter payments, that was. The local tax receipts, but then the big ones throughout the, um, the changes from the preliminary to final are the Division one, Division two, Division three salaries. Um, all other costs and equalization as a result of the fewer units. And then. Along with when you have fewer revenues, you, you decrease your expenditures. Um, and so they have the, um, concurrent Division one salary reduction, uh, in the final budget. Interestingly, um, and I said this last night, uh, when you hear that we had a significant enrollment decline. I thought I didn't even have to look at the school budgets and then putting together the school budget allocations because they're based on the units earned. There's a whole harmless, so nobody's, if they did decline in units, nobody's cut in the middle of the year. But if they gained in units, because we get additional funding when we gain, um, they would be given the additional. And there are a number of schools that actually increased, uh, units this year, and the largest one was Dickinson. Uh, and so there are small adjustments in there for those, uh, increased, uh, units at those schools that did increase. And the, the largest declines were actually at our middle schools, um, at Skyline and Stanton were the largest decline, um, in enrollment and units. So that kind of summarizes the final budget, I have to say, um, I was, I, I, I'm always doom and gloom. I'm not tonight, looking ahead, the, the twenty twenty two budget is incredibly hopeful. Um, there are a number of things happening, we'll continue to monitor enrollment, um, and. You know, the question is, will the students come back? We talked at length about last, uh, last night about where did they go? Um, they went two places, one, the number of homeschool requests increased dramatically this year. Um, and there was a shift to private school, now, will, will that change, will that continue? Again, we still have the ninety eight percent guarantee, so there is a safety net, um, in place for us. But I think it will only go up, but of course. Watching the world of COVID and, you know, all things a- as they play out will, will be critical through the, the spring and planning for the summer. The Governor's Recommended twenty twenty two budget includes a number of incredibly, um, powerful, uh, funding. Changes for the district as a result of the settlement, the lawsuit, um, that was settled. And they, they're through the out years, so we reviewed the epilogue language last night that actually specifies, it's not just a one year thing and it's not just a one time thing. Um, there are a number of years and a number of initiatives, but for us, um, and this is statewide, but for us, the opportunity funds will increase. K three basic unit will increase, there's a county home spudsman, um, put in place, and there's also recruitment and retention in high need schools. That's in the twenty twenty three budget, and there's also, there's also an incredibly active legislature right now, so definitely, I did it again. That's only what's in the, uh. That's only what's in the Governor's Recommended Budget, there's likely more that will happen throughout the spring and the legislative session. So, um, incredible things, and that will translate directly to funding for Red Clay, uh, in the final budget. In addition to that, SR two came, that's the CARES Act, um, Part two, and for Red Clay. That'll be over twenty million dollars over three years, and so we'll work on the funding, um, planning and implementation for that. It's directly for expenses related to COVID. Um, so a large part will be facilities in HVAC, technology and recovery services. In addition to that, the Reading Consortium. Excuse me, the Reading Consortium just released their recommendations, and so that group has been very active. But all told, what I can tell you is that I don't expect there to be a tax increase. And I absolutely do not expect, um, that there would be need for a referendum in the coming year. Excuse me, so the next steps, um, the, this is just a presentation tonight, Board Action would be next month. We'll continue to meet with the Finance Committee, we will, uh, start to proceed with the SR two planning and implementation. And then March DFAC will start to do the revenue, uh, projections for the next state budget, uh, starting July one. May first, I'll come back with another financial position report, which this month, uh, showed that we will meet. Uh, or end the year with a sufficient ending balance and then look forward to the twenty twenty two budget.
Thank you, Jill, are there any questions?
I, I do have a few questions, this is Dr. Bohm.
Okay.
Thank you for your report, Jill, um, I had a question about budget expenditure nine 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 zero 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 zero. And that was the expenditure for Board of Education. And it said that the board has thirty five thousand dollars that were allocated each year, can you tell us a little bit? Um, what that money is used for, I'm on the board and I'm, I'm not quite sure what it's used for.
Sure, um, it's usually, it, it's for different expenses, but the, the largest one is the School Board Association. The fees that are associated with that, it's also for the School Board Conference and Training. So it, those are usually the two largest expenses, but I can get you a history of what's been spent out of that budget in the past three years.
Alright, so yeah, I would appreciate that, so let, uh, let me just do a follow up here. So you're saying a large portion of that thirty five thousand dollars is spent on DSBA fees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, our budget comes out of taxpayer money and the DSBA. There are, their, their meetings aren't open to the public, are they?
No. No.
No, and do, does DSBA make their minutes available to the public?
No.
No.
So. S- so the concern that I have here, I guess, is, and I'm all, you know, I voted for us to join DSBA, I think that's fine. But if we're using taxpayer money. To pay the board's membership dues to join the DSBA. And the meetings aren't open to the public and they're not, um, sunshine laws wouldn't apply and FOIA laws won't apply. Then we're really not being transparent because the public who's paying the money for us to join the organization. Doesn't have access to the dissemination or discussion of the information in the, in the, in those, uh, meetings, is that correct?
Well, the one thing I would say is that the, the members of DSBA, at least from Red Clay's standpoint, I can't speak to the other districts. But they always present exactly, I mean, not word for word, but they present the action items and discussion points from the meetings publicly here.
Yes, and that's fine, but my, my question has to do with the DSBA, they're not, oh, they don't have open meetings. And their minutes aren't published to the general community, right? So. The, the thing that I'm raising here, or the challenge that members of the community could have is that we're paying taxpayer dues. For an organization to get membership in. That the public, whose money is being used to pay those dues, they don't have access to that information, they have access to information. That we decide to give them, which is nice, but Red Clay is often FOIA, our school board's often FOIA. Because people think that there might be information that we're not sharing with the public, right? That's the whole reason for the sunshine laws, so I think that's something we should think about moving forward, perhaps. Um, I think Mr. Casper is the Vice President of DSBA, perhaps you could make a motion or something to have those board meetings. DSBA meetings, their information made public or have open meetings or something like that, something to consider moving forward. So that was my first question, because I'm always, um, interested in being more transparent and accountable. My second question has to do with budget expenditure nine 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 seven zero six eight zero, security and school supervision. And, um, I noticed that we have over one point three million allocated for that budget item. And I wondered how much of it was for SRO funding?
Sure, um, I got your email earlier and, uh, I appreciate that heads up, so I was able to look that up. Um, our contract for SROs is four hundred and fifty three thousand, however, there was an amendment made to the contract this year because of COVID. And the number of days that were closed, um, and so the agreement is when we're closed, which we were through, um, or all virtual through. Our return date, and then there was the pause again, um, so we don't pay for all of the days. I don't know what, how many it's going to wind up being in the end, um, and so just to give you an estimate of two thirds, for example. Um, that would be two hundred and ninety nine thousand of that budget.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Sure.
I can respond a little bit to the DSBA comment and maybe Jason can as well. The point that you're raising, Dr. Bohm, has been raised and Mr. Mar- Dr. Marinucci has responded to it. I don't really remember exactly what the response was, but it was pretty clear that the DSBA is not subject to. The open meeting laws and the, 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 the issue has been discussed. Um, I think we can certainly get whatever he wrote, do you happen to have it, Jason? I don't.
I was trying to pull it up.
Yeah.
If I'd known, I, I wasn't aware.
Yeah, if we had known, we could have gotten prepared for it, but it has been raised within the DSBA. And, and thought about and, and responded to.
I think it would be great if we can just keep bringing this issue up, because I think having. Full, um, open meeting laws would be a great idea and the community should be able to access information if they're paying for us to have memberships. So thank you for your response, Kathy.
Wouldn't the, sorry, this is Ashley Sabo, wouldn't the, the DSBA monthly meetings not being open to the public be the same as? The National School Board Association when members go on that conference, that's taxpayer money, but. Public isn't going to those, so it's not much different, so. If the, if the concern is DSBA monthly meetings not being open and having all that. Information completely available to the public, then that same issue would be for any member to the national association meeting. So that's just something to put out there.
And again, I would just generally say for our board, again, as we report out. The activity that our board has with the SBA is Red Clay School Board demonstrating transparency. Or that that would be the legislative committees or any other committees that Red Clay Board Members sit on. I guess at this point, since Dr. Bohm just raised the issue and President Thompson indicated that it was already previously being discussed. That we just, again, make DSBA aware of. The requests, not only by Dr. Bohm, but of other board members are interested in. You know, having that serve as a open meetings law body with it. you know, having that serve as a open meetings law body with it being an association. And again, I'm not sure of the S B A's bylaws or how it was structured as it relates to that. But again, just make that note to Dr. Maranucci that, again, this issue came up during our board meeting this evening.
Will do.
That's good.
Thank you.
And we will do that.
Are there any other questions related to the budget?
Okay, hearing. Thank you very much.
And I do want to thank, again, Ms. Florrie, our business office, everyone who's working on district finances during this tumultuous, which is soon to be close to a year next month in March in terms of school district finances. So thank you to Ms. Florrie and and all those, and also to Ms. Julie, the choice office and everyone who's involved in the choice process. As Dr. Bone indicated, this is not a typical year and really trying to adhere to these traditional processes while maintaining and meeting the needs of our communities has been a huge undertaking. So I want our staff, who who's been a part of both of those endeavors, to to know that we greatly appreciate it. And that takes us into a third presentation because there's a lot of work being done. It was expressed on public comment. The fact that we have a team here this evening who's going to present our equity journey led by Dr. Swanda Bond. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bond and the group, the team, who's here to present some some innovative things that we're doing in red clay. And it's also an opportunity to tell our story because I think a lot of the work that we are doing hasn't been publicized or readily, you know, promoted because I think folks are about the work and not necessarily self-promotion, but we did want to take this opportunity to share many of the exciting things that we're doing as it relates to equity and diversity, inclusion, and and more importantly, looking at diversifying our teacher workforce as well. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Bone.
Thank you, Superintendent Green. Thank you, board, those that are here in person and also those that are virtual. So we wanted to take an opportunity tonight just to share some work that we've been doing in front of the scenes as well as behind the scenes, really just this year and this past summer, because as you all know, the work is continuous and we are learning while leading. Let me get this little clip ready. So just to go back and refresh, red clay does have an equity policy, and this policy came about with support from our school board years ago and looking at the importance of equity and diversity in our school district. So I bolded some important pieces that really drive a lot of our work, equity and diversity, culturally responsive practices, breaking down barriers, looking at historical disparities, and also making a change to culture. Now, this work does not happen in isolation, so I invited many of my team members here this evening to discuss the intersection of our work and how that work is grounding what we are doing here in our school district. This has been a tumultuous time. COVID has been hanging heavy over everything that we do, but the work has not stopped. We have been proactive as well as flexible and responsive. And with that, I do want to take a minute also to recognize folks that are not here in person, but here in spirit. Our twenty-nine diversity champions that are in every school and also part of our building leadership team that continue to take our work and integrate it and embed it systematically into the culture of our schools. So they have been our boots on the ground throughout this time. Our team tonight is our Director of Secondary Schools and School Operations, Mr. Sam Golda. We have Mrs. Holly Golda, our Supervisor of Social Studies from Curriculum and Instruction, and also Stacy Zdowski from Human Resources. And we're going to just share a little bit of our journey and our integration and collaboration of work this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Sam.
Thank you, T B. You know, two two summers ago, a group of us were able to travel to Chicago and go to the NICHA conference, NICHA conference, the conference. It's all about student voice and how to get more students talking about what we do on a day-to-day basis in in our school district. Two years later, we have a host of new initiatives in in red clay in regards to student voice, and I'm going to touch on just a few of them here tonight. The first one, very exciting, initiated by by this group upon the stage. We have our student member of the school board. So that will start, of course, this summer in July with the new school year, and we have that group sort of rounded up now here this month. I have my first meeting with that group here at the end of February. So that group will come together and we'll talk about what it's going to look like, how the rotation will work starting in July. And we're excited to get this initiative going. Now, it's interesting, the group I'm meeting with this year won't be the group because they're all going to graduate, but this group will be the one that sort of sets the stage and has the election for the new group that will come in and serve with you all in July. So we are really excited for the student member on on the board. The Democracy Schools Project has taken a little bit of a backseat here this year with the with the unique school year. But as a reminder, this was the idea of all of our schools becoming civic-minded schools. You know, having clubs and activities with a with a citizenship-type theme in mind, having philanthropic groups at the school level, leadership opportunities, understanding that all of our teachers, all of our educators are in fact civics teachers on a day-to-day basis because we want all of our students to learn how to be productive members of the community. So stay tuned because Democracy School will again pick up momentum here as we get back to more of a sense of normality. The superintendent student group, you know, Mr. Green still meets with with that group twice a school year. We had our first meeting. We have another one set up for the spring. These are leaders across our high schools that bring important topics to the table for Mr. Green and his cabinet to consider. It's a tremendously open group. We've had some deep conversations. Now, we used to be very surface level with these student-level groups. We used to talk about cafeteria food, bathrooms, and things of that nature. I feel like we've moved on to some deeper topics, and that's a good thing, that we're really hearing what's on students' minds deep down. Our student town halls have been a tremendous success this year. We've had online forums for folks to express, you know, again, deep topics that are going on in our school. We've learned about some outside agencies like Teen Sharp that are helping some of our students get ahead in the college application process. We've heard some unintended consequences of things that we do as a district that without hearing them from the mouths of babes, we might not have been able to make some of the changes that we're currently making in red clay. So the town halls are great, great ways for students to get their voice out there, but also great ways for the adults to reflect on what we have going on here in the school district. And then finally, the portrait of the graduate, you know, this is another thing that's taken a little bit of a backseat, but we're going to go ahead and get that portrait going this year. That's again, what we want all of our graduates to look like, feel like, skills we want them to have when they walk across the stage and shake Mr. Green's hand in the normal year at graduation. Next slide. A new initiative this year to further capture student voice and voices of the community. Red Clay has transformed an old school bus into a mobile confessional of sorts, and all testimonials are completely unscripted. If you haven't had a chance to see the video of the Red Clay Education Station, I urge you to get online and check that out. And at that point, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Holly so she can discuss the multiple ways we're enhancing our curriculum with a special focus on equity and cultural responsiveness.
Thank you. So within our curriculum instruction, we've also embedded student voice within our grade seven civics and high school civics curriculum. And this is also grown to include other districts throughout the state as we lead the course with student voice. And this will also be happening, our winter showcase tomorrow. So if you have not received invitation, I'll send it out again tonight, and you can join us to hear the top ten speeches from students who received the curriculum this past fall. And then we will also hold one in the spring as well. So that'll be tomorrow at three thirty. We've also moved on to training our teachers. So on the next slide, you'll see that we also continue to train our educators in E L A and social studies on the importance of multiple perspectives within our curriculum and our instruction, allowing our curriculum to serve as a mirror window and a sliding door. As co-chair of the Social Space Coalition of Delaware, we've begun to focus our statewide social studies units and D R C units to update them with an equity focus. We are going to go to R F P, which is Request for Proposal, for an equity focus on our curriculum, K through eight. That is a group that is being led through local LEAs, also the State Department of Education and other higher education institutions. So we're looking forward to that. We're hearing from multiple students and community members. We do know that we have a lot of work still to do, especially in our history programs. So being responsive to those voices, I applied for and we were awarded a grant from the Library of Congress, Teach with Primary Teach with Primary Sources, focusing on equity in our U S history classes. Teachers will receive content, training, and anti-racist pedagogy training to incorporate lessons and write lessons for our U S history curriculum. So the focus of this grant will be on grades four, eight, and eleven. And this is something that we've heard from our teachers that they would like to have assistance with. On the next slide, we've also been working with a work group of teachers. Over the summer, we've had many teachers reach out to both Tawanda and myself about ways that they can encourage social justice, have deep conversations, and also allow students to be heard and seen within their curriculum. As a result, we've reached out with our consultants, and we have a work group of teachers. We have had a three-hour training over the summer on the four domains of the social justice standards from learning for justice, which used to be teaching tolerance. We have continued that work group as teachers receive training on identity, diversity, justice, and action. They've been developing lessons, trying them in their classrooms, and then coming back about every two to three months to share what they have written and then to get feedback from their peers. The idea being that we'll be able to scale this throughout the district, K through twelve. And one of our our newest, as you've heard, is our comparative cultural studies. Again, we have heard from town halls, student-focused groups, and our board that we would like to have a course that will have lead us and to develop next year an elective of a course called Comparative Cultural Studies. We value diversity of all of our students, and we want students to see and learn about themselves and others. As you can see from the course description, this is a course that will allow students to learn about many different groups of people, ones that they identify with and ones that they would like to learn more about. As a result, we've reached out to many different community partners listed on the next slide. Some of them you've heard from today. And I think I can speak for Tawanda myself. These meetings have been wonderful, very engaging. And as you can tell, the other community partners that are listed here are passionate about their groups and they want to help. We've heard on every occasion, thank you for doing this work, and they wish that other districts would follow our lead. So as we continue to work on the development of this course, we'll be working with these community partners to develop a curriculum that is robust, one that is accurate, and breaks down misconceptions and stereotypes. And we are really looking forward to working with our community partners and our teachers to develop this curriculum. I will now pass this over to Stacy.
Thank you. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about the efforts that our Human Resources Department is taking to diversify our teacher workforce in red clay. So as we know, there's a problem that exists in the United States education system. And that problem is that our teacher workforce does not mirror our student body. Red Clay is no exception. Currently, we have approximately fifty percent of our students who are students of color, yet approximately only eighteen percent of our teachers are teachers of color. This is problematic because research has shown that students of color do more, do much, much better if they are educated by even just one teacher of color. And that's not all. In fact, studies have also shown that all students benefit from having teachers of color. As a Human Resources Department and as a district, we realize that this is a problem that has to be addressed. Through our recent partnership with the Rodell Foundation, we are actively working to diversify our teacher workforce and to retain more qualified teachers. We're doing this through trying to build sustainable systems that support new roles for mentor teachers who who are with our candidates, our pre-service teacher candidates, and also to support positions for residents that would be long-term. Our partnership with Rodell encompasses three main areas of focus, diversifying the workforce, recruiting, preparing, and retaining high-qualified teachers, highly qualified teachers, and strengthening our partnerships with I H Es. Next slide, please. Thank you. One way that we are working to diversify and grow our teacher pipeline is through teacher residency programs. Now, for those of you who may not know, in a teacher residency program, pre-service teachers spend an entire school year, from the first in-service day to the last teacher day, working with a highly qualified mentor teacher. They serve as a co-teacher in the classroom with that teacher for the school year. This experience is much longer and much more in-depth than a traditional student teaching placement, which can span anywhere from nine to fifteen weeks. In a residency model, pre-service teachers become a part of the community of the school in which they complete their student teaching. This is especially important because these residents learn through a combination of coursework and practical experience how to teach in red clay schools, particularly our high need schools. Whenever possible, these residents are then hired to serve in the same school or a school with similar demographics. We have been engaging in the work of teacher residencies since two thousand and fourteen. Since that time, not including the twelve interns that we have this year, we have trained twenty-five residents. And we have hired and retained sixteen of those residents. Our twelve resident, current residents for this year are located at A I Middle, Ritchie, Richardson Park Elementary, Moat, and Forest Oak, and they are with us through our partnerships with Womu and U D. Now, an exciting thing is the grant funding from the State Department of Education has enabled us to provide stipends to year-long residents in red clay. These stipends are either twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand dollars, depending on the placement. Those who are placed in high-need subject areas or high-need schools receive the higher amount, and that's determined by the list that's been put out by S. In exchange for the stipend, the residents agree to work in red clay for a minimum of three years. Now, recently, we have applied for grants again for the upcoming year to expand our partnerships. In addition to the University of Delaware and Wilmington University, we are attempting to add a residency program with Delaware State University. We are also hiring some of these interns to work during the summer with our Freedom School Project, which I believe Dr. Bond is going to talk about in just a few minutes. Our residents will be a welcome addition to this program as they continue to become a part of our red clay community. Our goal for next year is to have at least twenty-one year-long residents placed in red clay. Through our work with Rodell, we are also collaborating with the local I H Es to strengthen and diversify these residency programs. This includes work that we are doing under the guidance of U S Prep to strengthen the methods that we're using for choosing and developing high-quality teacher mentors. Next slide, please. So additionally, through our work with Rodell, we are working to strengthen our teacher academies and to grow the interest of red clay students in teaching as a profession. We are working with Rodell to develop a communication tool that will clearly explain to students and parents how students can become teachers in the least expensive way possible through utilizing high school course offerings and other programs that will help to defray the costs. We are also working with Rodell to develop a rubric that will be used in the future to guide the selection of teacher academy teachers. We're working with local I H Es to develop additional dual enrollment opportunities for teacher academy students. And as an added bonus, we've been told that the state is currently looking to add a social justice curricular component to the existing teacher academy curriculum. We are hoping that we can use this to attract more students to our teacher academies, especially students of color, by showing them how they can truly make a change in this world and advocate for social justice through becoming a teacher. In addition to this work that we are doing with recruitment, we're also working to make sure we support and retain the teachers that we hire. I think we needed, oh, if you could go to the next slide. To support the teachers that we hire, we continue to support our novice teachers through our mentoring program, which also includes our retired mentor program. We are also providing training to meet the needs of our new teachers while also advancing district goals. In the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, we provided training that focused on being culturally responsive educators. During these workshops, we covered such topics as what it means to be culturally responsive, what privilege is and how it exists in our society and how it affects people. We also talked about what implicit and explicit biases are. This year, due to the pressures of COVID, the professional development focus changed a little bit as we started to the professional development focus changed a little bit as we started to work with the teachers on how they could provide an engaging environment for their students, both virtually and in person. Last year, we obtained a grant for the mentoring program. And in addition to helping to fund our retired mentor program, it has also provided funding to extend private coaching sessions to some of our new teachers who were struggling. And this year was a struggle with being virtual and then being hybrid and then being virtual and back to hybrid. So we did have some teachers who needed a little extra support. We are working very hard to provide the support to our inexperienced teachers because we want to make sure that they experience the feeling of self-efficacy. We want them to be professionally satisfied, and we want them to stay in the classroom. This is just a broad overview of some of the work that's being done by our Human Resources Department. We have many other recruitment and retention efforts that are underway that are also focused on diversifying and strengthening our teacher pipeline and ultimately our teacher workforce. I would be glad to meet with members of the board to discuss these efforts in more detail. I'm very proud of the work that we are doing in Human Resources, and I'm very proud of how it aligns with the other equity work that is currently underway. Thank you.
But first, I just want to say thank you to my colleagues tonight for talking about how the work aligns and how it integrates and how it all works together to get us to our ultimate vision of what our end user, which is our students, what their experience is and should be in Red Clay schools. And I'm going to try to click it up. So we do also understand the school-to-home relationship that exists. So a few things that we put out this year, for those of you that may not have taken a look at it or have seen it, we put out a toolkit, and the toolkit really was around creating a brave space for greatest conversation. It provided suggestions and strategies, educators and parents, on having conversations with our young people in school and at home about race, racism, racial bias, understanding of bias, and how to take action on racial justice. This toolkit is still available and can be found on the district website under the Office of Equity and Strategic Partnerships. And we were working, beginning our school year this year, with a professional development that was discredited. Every person who participated in our educational staff. It was led by Laura Billups, who was a school psychologist, Irene Harrison, also a school psychologist, and Ms. Kelly Nichol, who is an art and special education teacher. They did a really nice job of doing a virtual platform that all of our staff members were able to participate in, and it was all around discussing identity and bias with our students. So it provided a lot of practical things that teachers could use in the classroom, including lesson plans, how to structure conversations that may be emotional, how to create anti-bias classroom environments, and really a lot on self-reflection. In addition to that, they provided a resource library that was created over the summer by staff members at Brandyone Springs that was available and is available to all of our staff. So this year, even though we have not had the opportunity to be fully impervious to all, that's why we have had the opportunity to kind of slow down and take a look at our partnerships that really support our equitable goals. So in the beginning, we talked about breaking barriers, changing culture, culturally responsive practices, equity and diversity. So when we look at our partnerships, really look at our partnerships through that lens. Like Stacy just discussed, we have a partnership with Rodell around teacher recruitment and retaining and diversifying our workforce. And we are very happy to announce that we are being awarded a forty thousand dollar grant from Rodell to support summer work in our high-need schools through the through Children's Defense Fund and the Freedom Schools. For those of you that are not familiar with the Freedom School, the Freedom School is a K-12 program that provides scholars with a rich culturally-relevant pedagogy and high-quality skills that deepen their understanding of themselves and all that they have in common with others in a multiracial, multicultural, democratic society. This program will help us to empower our scholars to believe in their ability and responsibility to make a difference while instilling in them a love for reading and also help to avoid summer learning loss. So really, a literacy program that is based in the tenets of cultural relevancy. In addition, we work with the United Way of Delaware. We've had the pleasure this year of being part of the pods. We meet every Friday. The pods consist of community partners from all over the state. So community partners like the LACC, places like that, DAFI. And we meet every Friday to really brainstorm and collaborate around how we can best support our community members and our students while we are in this virtual environment. We brainstorm around technology. We brainstorm around services and tools of course. We brainstorm around loss of learning and how they can assist us and how we can assist them in making sure that our students are provided with a safe learning environment during those times. We also are partnering with Springboard Learning Collaborative this summer. And Springboard Learning Collaborative is all about closing the literacy gap by closing the gap between home and school. So again, reaching out into our community. Our educators that are going to be participating in that program with our high-need schools will be able to work with family members on helping them help their students be able to succeed in learning by fourth grade. The University of Penn, the DVCEE, is a continuing partnership. This year, we've had the opportunity to partner with them on some student leadership institutes that I'm going to talk about in a couple of seconds. But what's interesting is when we first joined the DVCEE, we were the only Delaware district that was a part of this. And it was about thirty school districts from the tri-state area. Now, there are over forty school districts, including the state, the Delaware State Department of Education, has joined this effort this year. And really, our conversations are around educational equity and training and professional development. And then, last but not least, the Delaware Historical Society has been a lunchtime player for us this year. As Holly expressed earlier, our work around curricular revision, they have been helping us to connect with community partners from different ethnic backgrounds, different identity groups. And I can echo what she said, just having these meetings this year with folks from all over, up and down Delaware, and them telling their stories has really been enlightening for us. Because although we are professionals in the field, we are not experts in all things. And cultural proficiency really isn't proficiency, it is an ongoing process. So we are leaving well-earned. Next slide, please. So one thing we're really excited about is our Student Diversity Committee. And like Sam Goldner explained earlier, we have many town halls this year in which our students really put out things from their perspective that they wanted to see in our schools as a part of their student experience here in Red Clay. So as an outcome from one of our student town halls, we established the University Committee. Now, with COVID in a virtual world, it is a slow go. But with that, our diversity champions at all of our secondary schools have begun to solicit students to participate on our diversity committees. And our diversity committees, we will be working through our partnership with the Walnut Street YMCA, looking at student empowerment workshops as well as the Network Delaware because we really want it to be around action civics and not just students meeting to talk about things that they see in their schools. But as you talk and as you see and as you have brought information from our district-level diversity committee, how can you then take those pieces and make it into justice as well as action? So last Thursday, the students that have been solicited to participate in the diversity committee, as well as some of our classes, some of our teachers that are diversity champions, invited students to participate in these voluntary student leadership institutes. One was on a school day, one was on a day that was the grading day, and we had a nice turnout from Red Clay School District. The Thursday session was the high school session, and I can tell you during that session, it was a great day to be a Highlander. We had two students that participated in the poetry slam that they had in the evening. Ms. Tyanna Jervy from McCain performed in the poetry slam, and she really spoke her truth. She was really brave in that space. And then Christina Marion, who was also a Stanton Falcon, so I'll take it, I have to set it out there. She won twenty-five dollars and a People's Choice Award that they created on the spot because her poetry was so riveting about her experience. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the champions that invited the students to participate in this Leadership Institute over these two days. One day was high school, one day was middle school, so it was all encompassing and inclusive of our student diversity committee at our schools. And then, thinking through how perspective comes full circle. Last Thursday, it was also another great day to be a Highlander. They had New York Times bestselling author Christina Heinrich, and she actually was invited through Zoom to our Teacher of the Year's classroom, Ms. Kim Stock. Kim Stock actually used one of her donor choose grants to bring the author in. And what's really nice and interesting about this is that eleventh-grade ELA teachers actually have been collaborating this year about bringing perspectives into the curriculum. And this was one of the pieces that they used to expand that work. So for those of you that may not know, Christina Heinrich wrote the book, The Book of Unknown Americans. It's a fictional novel, takes place in Wilmington, and there's two teenage main characters. Both of them are immigrants, like Christina. Christina is actually Wilmington native and the daughter of two Canaanian immigrants. The students in the story attend AI and what used to be Central School, so very relevant. And a quote from Kim Stock, she said, "I think this unit is a good example of how meaningful diversity can be infused into already-existing curriculum and then modified to meet English language learners, college prep resources, as well as advanced placement literature." So a very nice way to bring this full circle. And then, last but not least, I know we gave you all a mouthful tonight, but for the community at large that is watching this, as well as our board, we have a landing page on our district website now where you can actually go on and see all of these things we've discussed tonight. You can take a look at some of our videos from our education station bus. You can take a look at some videos from our student town halls. You'll actually be able to go online and see some products out of our diversity committee, take a look at our partnerships. So it is a very user-friendly space where you can go online and see what Red Clay is up to when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I encourage you all to peruse our site. And then, last but not least, we all know that we are in a space where we still have a lot, a lot of work to do. So in the words of Maya Angelou, "Do the best you can until you know better, then when you know better, do better." So on that note, I'm going to leave it there. I guess I can't do more of a mic drop than Maya Angelou. But as Stacy said, my door is always open. If anyone on the board would like to discuss any of our initiatives that we are undertaking this year, I am always available for conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bond.
Thank you, Dr. Bond. Thank you, Mr. Goldner, Mr. Goldner, and Ms. Striasky for your work in presenting this evening. And again, all the other staff members across the district who are not only supporting but leading this work around diversity, equity, and inclusion. Any questions from the board? I'll go right into my presentation.
I think you should go right into it.
All right. And so, thank you. Thank you to those who are joining us virtually, as well as those who came out this evening. Again, thank you to all our staff members for your presentations. I'm not going to belabor the point, again, because much of what we shared tonight, I think, was enough to not only ponder, but also celebrate and recognize the many people who are doing so much great work throughout our community and supporting Red Clay students, staff, and families. Generally, my report, just want to start off with the fact that we are in the midst of vaccination. As a relation to COVID, we first clinic, vaccination clinic, at the John Dick School, where we had the opportunity to vaccinate over two hundred educators, school staff members, with their first round of the COVID nineteen vaccination. And the event was organized and continues to be organized statewide by the Delaware Department of Education. And our second opportunity to host that clinic will be on Friday, February nineteenth. And again, that is an invite only for those who get the invite from the Department of Ed. It is not a public event. Again, it is based on the process that DOE is facilitating. We also had the opportunity to participate in a story with the Wilmington News Channel, WITN, story featuring Shortledge and Warner. Again, the wonderful work that our educators are doing there to support both of those schools in this pandemic, giving a close look and lens at the impact, not only of COVID, but I think the resilience that we're seeing throughout our community as we continue to navigate this and how our staff members and educators and leaders are keeping students safe. Just a general update again, as of now, if you continue to monitor the state's website at myhealthycommunities.com, it gets released on Wednesdays. We're currently at sixty-two reported student cases, and this dates back again from September first, in-person containment cases. And they're identifying eighty-seven staff members. Again, that's across all employee groups. We continue to work on our mitigating strategies, again, now pushing and supporting vaccination opportunities. We have, through our HR department, an opportunity to support vaccinations for those in the Red Clay community who are sixty-five years older, through the air, nose, and throat analogy of Delaware, as well as Christiana Care hosted an event last Friday that we were able to provide fifty opportunities to the Red Clay community for anyone who is most impacted by COVID, but who are also in that sixty-five and older community. Last week was a point of celebration as it was National School Counseling Week. Again, so we just want to take this opportunity, I want to take this opportunity to, again, acknowledge all of the efforts that our school counselors continue to do, again, more so now than ever. I truly think of one of my heroes, my sixth-grade or elementary school guidance counselor, his name is Dr. Askew, who truly was a lifeline for me. He was a mentor, a role model, a protector. I don't know if I shared this story, but he drove an old Chrysler New Yorker, and he literally would follow me on my way home to make sure that I wouldn't get in trouble. He would make sure that I wouldn't follow the bad ground. I don't think the car went any faster than fifteen miles per hour as we would try to outrun it, jump fences, run through other, you know, houses, streets, and neighborhoods. And he would literally just slowly turn the corner. And he would just patrol the neighborhood to the point that we would get tired of running from him, that we would just go home. And I think about, you know, those small efforts, and if I didn't have a Dr. Askew who was a school counselor in my life, where would I have been? What corner might have turned around that might have been a bad corner? And so, as it relates to our school counselors, not only do they do that work, obviously, in our schools, but in this pandemic, they're doing that work outside of our schools. So again, kudos to all of the school counselors across Red Clay. Thank you to Mr. Goldner and also Dr. Grundy for their work and facilitation in supporting our school counselors throughout the district. And as we talk about the work of our school counselors, we do want to promote an event tomorrow that's hosted by Lieutenant Governor. Our Lieutenant Governor tomorrow, which will be hosted on Thursday, February eleventh, from six to seven PM. It's a Latino Behavioral Health Town Hall. Again, so this information is public. It was shared. We just want to make sure, again, that we're providing resources to our diverse community. And not only that, making our community aware of available resources, again, as we continue to get impacted and really being mindful of our mental well-being during these times because we're all stressed, we're all stretched. And again, just being conscious of, you know, where those available supports are. So again, thank you to Lieutenant Governor Rebecca Hall Long and those others who will be participating in that event along with the other partners for facilitating that. Again, just again promoting, as we did not only last week in our Red Clay this week, but just sharing additional information. So this is recommended for parents and caregivers, which is one eight hundred nine six nine help. This is a mobile response and stabilization service. It is a free service, so if anyone is having difficulties, again, navigating this pandemic or just needs supports, this is an opportunity or information for parents and caregivers, and then also our students. Again, being a father of three, my wife's a high school educator, really seeing an impact on our children as they transition, you know, through this ongoing, not just pandemic, but everything else that they're seeing in the world. So to our students, if you feel that you are in need of support, here's an opportunity for you too. It's tech DE to seven one four seven four one, excuse me, seven four one seven four one. This is a crisis text line. It's free, twenty-four seven, for people who are at crisis. And again, we just want to make sure that our community has these resources and as a school, district, and educator community. I know in Newcastle County, we all got together, so thank you to Dr. Sarah Sellefson as well for the work her and her teams are leading with our school psychologists, our crisis response teams, and really making sure that we get this critical information out to our families and to our community. Again, if you're having struggles, then know that these resources are available to you. Skip to the next one. We are in the process of state testing this spring. And it's our hope that the state files for a waiver and that waiver gets honored by the US Department of Education. But until that process is flushed out, we still have to proceed with state testing. So we're offering all students the opportunity to test in the spring. Again, testing must be completed in person at school. So we're looking at those asynchronous Wednesdays, those opportunities, completing the phone survey, which should have gone out. I don't know if it's gone out yet. It should have gone out. Just with regards to letting us know in terms of if you're Red Clay Online and student plans to come to school, the test, if there's transportation needs, and again, know that there are COVID precautions in place. You know, in terms of you're sick, as we would generally ask you on any Tuesday when you're doing this. Tuesday when you're doing the health screening, to stay home, it would be no different than this. Um, and then again, for Red Clay all campus, students will also test in person according to their school schedule. Um, but again, it is our goal and anticipation. Um, I know that there's a a a large legislative contingency that has supported and solicited the Secretary of Ed to file for a um US Department of Ed waiver as it relates to state testing again this year. And as we started off this meeting and celebrating uh Black History, we we kicked it off um just within the community at the end of January during the Martin Luther King Holiday Week and Day of Service. In that week following, I want to thank Mr. Horace Knight, who's a a guy who works behind the scenes.
Yes, he does.
Um, but is instrumental in the community in capturing these moments and capture this picture, which I think is fitting um of 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 quality young men and and men in our community who are doing powerful work, which led us into um, like a Black History Month. Go to the next slide where we see opportunities in our schools, such as AI High School, um, who's taken the opportunity to celebrate uh some of their Tiger alumni, like former honor student, uh, Michelle Swift, who promotes kindness and positivity every day as a kindergarten teacher at Brandywine Springs School. Uh, Delaware Business Times, forty, under forty honorary, Justin Wright, uh, who graduated from AI High School uh one year early before becoming the youngest person ever elected in the city of Wilmington, uh, City Council. And then also Ajay Harper, who is carving out time from her busy career as a nurse uh to build Black Girl Health Collective, an inclusive space focused on wellness. Um, so this is just one of the many things that are happening across the district again during Black History Month. And at Conrad Schools of Science, uh, the Minority Student Union, I'm partner um with with the comps team to lead a social media takeover. Um, also at our elementary schools, students are learning about different historical figures and contributions of Black Americans through their daily announcements, research projects, read alouds. Uh, the Balt Elementary School students and staff are taking daily tours of the Balt Bears Black and Brown Heritage Museum, a virtual collection of videos about history makers and politics, global and human rights, the arts, sports, and other areas. And at Lewis Dual Language Elementary School, as another example, students are hard at work exploring Black history and preparing for a special video that will um be produced at the end of the month. I want to thank Stanton Falcons for reaching out. I know many of our district office staff members, Dr. Grumal, Dr. Shaw, Mr. Golda, and myself are participating in their Festival of Words Celebration twenty twenty-one, uh, where they're doing a book study. They launched the Stanton Book Club, uh, where they're reading um Black Brother, Black Brother. And so we had the opportunity to engage in that. So thank you to Ms. Navarre Robinson and the staff over at Stanton uh Middle School for starting that book club and allowing us to participate. We had the privilege on Friday of last week to have our Secretary of Ed, Dr. Susan Bunting, stop by several Red Clay schools um to observe um in person in our version of hybrid learning. Um, she visited Stanton Middle, AI High, Brandywine Springs, and concluded her visit at Balt's um elem- elementary. And just a quote, "Visiting four of your schools on Friday was a delight. I'm extremely appreciative of the time and expertise your administrators invested in both school tours, our conversations about what made each building special. Your students and staff appeared extremely happy to be back in their spotless and COVID-prevented environments. At the elementary, middle, and high school levels, we observed students who were totally engaged in well-designed learning activities. If this is a reflection of what is happening in all of your schools, I'm eagerly anticipating uh returns." And that's a quote from our Secretary of Ed, Dr. Susan Bunting. And last but not least, we are in that time period where we're asking for nominations for Teacher of the Year um by this Friday, if I'm not mistaken, February twelfth. So Teacher of the Year nominations. Um, so do you know a Red Clay classroom teacher who is dedicated, inspiring, and making a difference? If so, please take time to nominate this person for the twenty twenty-two Red Clay Teacher of the Year Award. Students, employees, parents, guardians, and community members are encouraged to nominate uh one or more of these dynamic inspirational teachers. So we ask you to go to redclayschools.com to nominate, again, a outstanding educator by February twelfth. Um, Ms. Beaulieu went through the choice presentation, so you have that information. Uh, Ms. Florrie did mention in her budget presentation, just with regards to the Reading Consortium, again, understanding that none of the board members in essence sit on Reading Consortium, although the meetings are public. Um, Reading did have a virtual um press release on uh February fifth um to highlight their budget summary and interim recommendations for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget. Um, you can have, go and get that information online. It's just some upcoming dates. They have started a new settlement work group who just had a meeting uh two nights ago. Um, the next meeting for Social Determinants Work Group will be on tomorrow from four thirty to six. Uh, the Reading Planning Team meeting will be on uh the twelfth, and then the full body meets on February eighteenth from five to seven. And just for others to be aware, and I'm sure our board members are aware, the Joint Finance Committee Public Education hearing is scheduled for February seventeenth at one PM. Um, and you can go on the Legislative Hall, uh, Delaware.gov website to get the link and that information, but we will also make that public as well. Um, that concludes my superintendent report, and I will now turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. So now we move on to items submitted by the board, and I notice item A is February tenth, twenty twenty-one, and I guess Dr. Bohm, for informational purposes, will discuss RCA formal appeal. Do you want to do that, Dr. Bohm?
You want me, I just, my question was that I know that RCA had made a motion, they had appealed the district's decision to uh for schools to remain open, and there were a number of letters we received, and there was an official appeal, and I was, you weighed into that conversation, and I'd like you to update the community on what you said.
I didn't, I didn't hear the end of that, I'm sorry.
You weighed in on that conversation and replied to Kelly Furco and to Stephen Fackenthal, and I just wanted to know if you could share what you said with the community.
Sure, I'll I'll certainly share. So um, the RCA, uh, Kelly Furco wrote to me and wanted to, and indicated that Stephen Fackenthal had made a formal request on behalf of the RCA prior to our December fifteenth meeting. And Mr. Fackenthal read it at the meeting, and she, and there was, he did read his position. I didn't know it was a formal request. I didn't know there was any formal request made. I think that's not necessarily the point. Our board, as you might remember, heard that, listened, and our board entered into and passed the resolution indicating that there's possibility to make the decisions regarding um whether school is in-person or hybrid or um remote rest within the con- within the confines of our superintendent's job description and not a board matter, and that resolution passed. So I didn't believe there was any basis for an appeal. Since that, Mr. Green has spoken to our attorney and has gotten a legal opinion, which I'm sure Mr. Green can share as well. But there seems not to be any kind of legal basis whatsoever for any kind of appeal.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we go on to school board committee reports. Who has reports that they want to give? Let's just order them and we'll take turns.
I do.
Okay, so Dr. Newton, I know uh Ms. Sabo does. I do. Anybody else?
I can, um, I did find the information, so I can address Dr. Bohm's question.
Okay, so we'll put you on to Mr. Casper. Anybody else? Oh, because Mr. Matthews does, and Mr. Wilson. Okay, so um, why don't you go first, Mr. Casper? How's that? Thank you.
Absolutely. So um, Dr. Bohm, I apologize, when when you had the uh
No one can hear you, Jason.
I'm sorry.
She can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Not just me, no one can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
No. Very, very faintly.
Okay, um, can you hear me now?
You're very faint. Sounds like you're whispering.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to uh, I don't want to be too loud in the
That's better. Thank you.
Okay, so those of you in the auditorium, I apologize. Um, but I was able to locate the information because that had, that question about DSBA being subject of to uh sunshine law has been brought up before, and it was addressed. Um, DSBA is a properly registered registered five oh one C four nonprofit corporation. So it's not established by any statute, and in in a sense, the cost of membership includes um the purchase and license for Board Docs platform that we all use. Um, but it's it's really kind of no, even though it's paid for by taxpayer dollars, it's it it's kind of no different than uh the district paying for a Dell computer, for example. Um, you know, it's not that Dell computers aren't subject to FOIA laws, uh, open meeting walls. Uh, the same logic can be used for goods and services that a district would purchase. So I I hope that clarifies your question.
Okay, Dr. Newton, do you want to go next?
Yeah, I will. The Code of Conduct Committee, can you hear me?
Yes, oh, I can.
No.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. The Code of Conduct Committee met on Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. The committee is chaired by by Sam Golda. The committee started off reviewing the Code of Conduct, which had not been extensively reviewed since nineteen ninety-one. Dr. Golda introduced us to models from Anarundel County and Cecil County. The group started to work on sections that were out of date and needed changes. This committee's work will continue at the March twenty twenty-one meeting.
Done, okay. Mr. Wilson, do you want to go?
Okay, um legislative committee meeting. Uh, we've been pretty busy, but with every, everything going on from the national level down to state level, we have uh eight bills that we are involved with supporting and about three that we're not supporting. Uh, basically, uh right on down to the uh board elections that they wanted to change it back to four, but the state do not want, uh, DSBA do not want to support that, want to keep it at five years because uh people that get involved with board election and board members want to be involved. You know, they were looking at people saying, cut it back to three years, four years, but take so much money to run for these board elections. They want to be able to hold on to people that, you know, that want to be involved. And pretty much everybody that wants to be served on the school board is there, you know, and they are involved. Also, as far as our facility committee, we won't have another meeting till three fifteen. And I like to say I sat in on the diversity meeting, and boy, was it a experience. I want to say to Dr. Bond, you're doing a great job, and your cohort's the one that serve on the committee with you. Such open dialogue, and I was able to pick up a few things myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Matthews, do you want to go next?
Sure, thank you, President Thompson. Um, first and foremost, I wanted to thank uh Superintendent Green and all the speakers tonight. Excellent reporting. I was certainly thrilled um to also see the number of of collaborative efforts that we're doing in the community when it comes to diversity and inclusion. The public comments, I have to say, were fantastic and absolutely wonderful. Um, everyone from our our former and and recent student, and to everyone's comments supporting the Comparative Cultural Studies class, which I am also in full support of. Um, I just wanted to say kudos and thank you. Today, I actually had um an opportunity to attend an SBA's Equity Symposium. It was a four-and-a-half-hour-long conference today, um, and it was incredible. And I had the opportunity to attend last year with Dr. Bowman, with President Thompson, um, along with some other members of District Office and Superintendent Green. This year, it was virtual, and it was offered free, which was wonderful. We like that. Um, and it was, it it really covered a lot of of information, and a lot of the work that we're doing today um was reflective of of the work that other school districts are doing. Um, and one, the keynote speaker uh for for the symposium was Brandon Fleming. Um, and I have to tell you that, you know, just a a little snippet of the of the work that he's doing. He's an Harvard-trained educator. Um, and he uh trained at-risk students and youth um in the Atlanta area, and I'm not sure if you've heard these articles. You may have heard his name before, but over the summer, he had brought these students from Atlanta um and brought them to Harvard University to compete and and debate, and on the debate team. Um, and the the work of just connecting the the gaps and the bridges of bringing these at-risk youth and making them world-class champions on the debate team, on on that type of, you know, level playing stage was so inspiring. And um he's also authoring a book, and his his whole, I guess, the theme of his pre- presentation was undoing miseducation. And I think we have to do a lot of undoing miseducation, and I think that he made some really great points. The symposium was recorded, and it was brought up today that it would be available online. So if there are any board members who weren't able to participate or were interested in um li- listening into into some of the sessions, they had a student presentation, which was really good. Uh, they had board members um in different uh forums, panel discussions, and that was really good. Um, I attended the CAD Fund Committee uh meeting. Um, I also atta- or I will be attending the next uh Facilities Committee meeting last month, and this past month, we did not have one, as those meetings are quarterly. Um, and as Mr. Martin mentioned, our next meeting's not until March fifteenth, um, and I'll give an update in our next meeting. Um, one item that I wanted to submit to the board um and highlight is is the recent passing of a a gender and non-conforming policy from the Christina School District. It was something that was brought up by one of their school board members, Claire O'Neil. Um, you may have seen um a little bit of this in the recent New York Post. Um, it was something that's kind of been uh floating around, and I I wanted to submit that, an item submitted by the board, and maybe have our policy committee take a look at the needs and a policy that we could create in Red Clay. Back in twenty eighteen, before I was a school board member, I actually gave public comment and presented a policy that was very similar to the one that was passed uh by Christina just this past month at their most recent meeting. So it's something that I think we can do as well. I think it's something we can achieve and look at. Um, and it's something I want to send to our policy committee to draft, and then to create some recommendations and submit that back to the board at our next month's meeting, for submitting the recommendation at the next meeting, but then having them come back to us at a later date with their recommendations and in a drafted policy. Something else that I'm also already interested in, I I attended a webinar um, and it was facilitated by an author named Mary Otto, and it was really good, and um, she authored a book called Teeth: The Story of Beauty, Inequity, and the Struggle for Oral Health in America. And I know that there is um some current legislation expanding the services um for oral health across the state and more access um to communities that don't necessarily have access to oral care. Um, and a lot of the discussion on this, this uh webinar was hosted by the University of Pennsylvania, and um, a lot of the discussion was about the disconnect of oral health, particularly now throughout the pandemic, but also just inequities across the board, specifically with Black and Latino students um not receiving oral health, and how schools can facilitate and maybe bridge those gaps in a meaningful way. Um, there was one case in the state of Maryland that's that was highlighted in her book, where a student died um after not receiving appropriate oral health and care. And as we, you know, try to meet the needs, you know, mental, physical, and so forth, and educational needs to our students, um, a lot of school districts, they hire dental hygienists. I don't think we have a dental hygienist in our school, and maybe it's it's a position like that that could pre- help us create some policies and meet some needs for our students. I know, again, there's some current legislation on the table of expanding those services throughout the state. Um, so if there are any board members on this board who would like to collaborate, it's something I'm looking into. Um, please feel free to reach out to me. I would love to to maybe do some research, and Mr. Green, if you have anyone on staff that may a dear of assistance in in this dialogue and discussion, and uh maybe just, you know, looking into this for our school district, um, that would be of great help. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, and Ashley Sabo, do you?
I don't have any committee reports. I just had one thing.
I don't have any committee reports. I just had one thing to say. And it related to choice, and it comes up a number of years that we've, when we do choice, when we talk about schools that are. Kind of popular choice venues and then the ones that aren't. And it's mentioned at times that we have exceptional schools. And I would say that just because a school isn't chosen for high choice doesn't mean that it's not exceptional. So I was thinking that because that might be the community's view that if a school doesn't have a lot of people choicing into it. It's not an excellent choice, that since we have such a great marketing and media ability. That maybe we use them and we talk about how great our schools are on just kind of an ongoing basis. And I know some schools do that on their own, but some of the schools that might not be mentioned as often. But that are still doing great things for our kids and in the communities. And may not have those big choice numbers. I just think it would be great if we could maybe put them in, you know, on the YouTube channel. Or have a video made for them or just kind of spotlight some of the great stuff that they're doing. So that was all.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a couple of committee reports. I attended the board policy, as I mentioned, on February third. We received comments on board policy eight thousand and three that we passed today that made it much better. We heard from Miss April Anderson of all that Red Clay does for our children experiencing homelessness. To enable them to have a normal high school experience with the ability to participate in all activities. It was truly impressive. I mean, I really learned a lot, but it was truly impressive, the efforts that are made. By our Red Clay community to ensure that those students, even those that are experiencing homelessness at the moment. Are getting a really great, you know, education and the full experience. So I was really impressed by that. The number of families in Red Clay experiencing homelessness has increased rather dramatically during the pandemic, which is also rather sad. I, as I mentioned, I attended the CFRC on February, last night. It was a very involved thing. I will attest that Jill was very, very happy last night, which was a really good thing. We covered the financial report as usual, and we are in good shape financially. Ninety-eight half percent revenues received and fifty-six percent expended. On the revenue side, we're a little bit ahead of last year, and on the expenditure side, we're a little behind, so we're in good shape. We covered the financial position report. So we're okay there. And of course, we covered the FY twenty twenty one final budget in great detail. The CFRC recommended adoption and was in favor. It was a really great meeting, in-depth and clear presentations by Ms. Florrie. So thank you very much, Jill, and the whole committee said the same thing. It was really a great, a great report. I attended the RCEF this morning along with Jason and Martin and many others, the Red Clay Education Foundation. Always a group that is really good to speak with. They are truly looking at, the RCEF has a little bit of money. They're suspending most programs that are due to COVID, obviously, and asking for money at this point in time is rather hard. But the RCEF is still continuing to reach out and grant scholarships to students and grant many, many grants. And really look at ways in which we can, you know, do something with the money that we have. So it's a great group of people. And they too are always looking out for the best of our Red Clay students. I have to second what Mr. Matthews said. I appreciated all of the presentations tonight. It is absolutely fantastic to see how we are leading in so many areas in Red Clay. And I mean that in the choice area, so thank you, Christine. And I also mean that in the whole diversity and equity area. Thank you, Dr. Bond, and to Holly and Ms. Goldner and Mr. Goldner. Those, the new education programs sound wonderful. So thank you very much. I always think Red Clay is doing a fantastic job leading the way, and I'm really proud to be a part of Red Clay. Thank you all. Okay, and with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Kathy, I have a number of items.
Oh, okay, you didn't raise that before, so I did.
No, I did raise it. I had my hand raised just like this for a long time, when everyone else had their hand raised.
Everybody spoke up, but okay. Go ahead.
All right, so I have a number of reports. One, the first is that. I did attend the Diversity Committee meeting on January twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. I'm not, I have a whole page of items, but I'm not going to read them because we had a wonderful report from the committee. So thank you all for sharing that information with us. I am going to bring up a number of other items because they all fall into the context of diversity and inclusion. The first is that I'm going to make a motion at the next meeting or the meeting after that all future board meetings. Should be provided in a virtual Zoom format as we move forward. Because a number of people from the community have indicated they really, really like the virtual option, and we've had so much participation over the last year. So that's definitely coming up as part of our inclusion work that we're doing in the district. The second thing I wanted to raise was that the. Coalition working on the Black American Studies Class at the state level has continued to do a lot of work. And we've been meeting and we actually have a few meetings scheduled for next week. So as more information and the actual legislation is birthed into existence, I will bring that to the board. And I will also bring the resolution forward once the legislation is created. I also wanted to take a moment to thank Senator Darius Brown and Representative Sherri Dorsey Walker for Senate Bill thirty one. Which adds the words race, color, and national origin to the state constitution's equal and equal rights clause. The ERA bill is one of the eight proposals included in the Justice for All Agenda that was laid out by the Delaware Legislative Black Caucus. And Senate Bill thirty one is especially important because we would be, we would be remiss. If we didn't acknowledge that Delaware fell behind the nation by thirty years. In ratifying the equal amendment clauses to the Reconstruction Amendments. So that would be Amendment thirteen, fourteenth, and fifteenth. So I wanted to thank everyone for their hard work on that initiative, and I'm so excited that it passed. And I also wanted to take a moment to talk a little bit about JP Street Senior. We have a senior high school student in our district who worked with one of his teachers to write an essay on Mr. JP Street. And I wanted to share parts of that essay with you this evening as part of Black History Month. So the title of his essay was Who Decides What We Learn in Class? Let Us Honor Mr. JP Street Senior. Newcastle County Councilman of the Tenth District, Mr. JP Street Senior, is Delaware's fiery advocate. Against segregation and unequal education. For close to fifty years, eighteen of them on county council, Mr. Street fought against segregation forever tactics. Used by the state of Delaware to deny equal educational opportunities to inner-city youth. After working throughout the nineteen eighties to ensure Newcastle County public schools were integrated without violence. Mr. Street became chairman of the Coalition to Save Our Children. In this role, he represented children from Wilmington in Newcastle County desegregation litigation efforts. He fought to keep schools integrated when the state lifted desegregation orders in nineteen ninety six. In court, Mr. Street challenged the idea that schools were successfully integrating. And he argued that schools were only desegregated because of the courts, and that if desegregation orders were lifted, schools would resegregate. Mr. Street's rough around the edges, refusing to back down personality makes him inspiring. And according to some people, sometimes hard to work with. Mr. Street refuses to believe that Black and Brown youth are unteachable. And that we deserve less than all of the others. His vocal in-your-face style makes people stop and listen to what he has to say and make some fun to listen to. Mr. Street is still in office today and continues to fight for racial justice. In twenty eighteen, he helped file a lawsuit against Governor Carney, demanded additional money for students in need. He argued that ignoring the academic needs of disadvantaged children leads them to be unfairly subjected to disciplinary measures. Including suspension and expulsion, and adequate funding could help break the school-to-prison pipeline. After two years, this case was settled by the state. In response to that, Mr. Street stated, while this settlement is reasonable today, I must make it clear. That the battle for fairness in public school education in Delaware is not over, and advocacy for improvement will continue. At this point in his life, it seems to many students in the city of Wilmington that Mr. Street is simply unstoppable. The story of desegregation and the fight against resegregation in Wilmington. Is one of the most important desegregation stories in the nation. Mr. Street played a key role in Wilmington's civil rights movement and is definitely a role model, not just for the children of Wilmington. But throughout the county. Mr. Street has never faltered in his fight for social justice and his unwavering, and his unwavering commitment to Wilmington's children. Demonstrates his courage, his power, and his political will. Then he concludes by saying, yes, Mr. Street's legacy must be acknowledged, celebrated, and taught in all of our schools. Because Red Clay would simply not exist with Mr. JP Street. So I wanted to honor our student, but more than that, honor Mr. JP Street for all the work he's done. Around desegregation and the resegregation of our schools, and I thought that was a fitting essay. So thank you.
Okay, with that, I think we're done. Is it, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Dr. Bohm.
Dr. Bohm, is there a second?
Second by Dr. Newton.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So make sure you're safe driving, and for those who are still watching, our community members, students, staff. We are snow watch, so this will be a sleepless night, and we will determine what the impact will be on schools tomorrow. Hopefully nothing, but. Just snow watch.
Sleepy, sleepy tight, Mr. Green.
And it's weird because my dogs actually, like they're.